All right, I will call this meeting to order at 6:34 PM. We have a roll call in September 4th of 2019.
Mike Wagner.
Here.
Cindy Byten.
Here.
Gary Demashke.
Here.
James Cartman.
Here.
Mary Bashall.
Here.
Isaiah Curl. Thank you.
The voice of the mother is.
I have my policy must stand for the public.
There was allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have any approval of the agenda for tonight?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none. Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
I'll go yes as well. Approval of the Board of Education meeting minutes from September 23rd of 2019. So moved.
Uh, second.
Are there any questions or changes? Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
I'll go yes as well. We're on to the approval of the panel of curators dispersing.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Anybody have any questions about any of that?
A whole lot of stuff going down there.
I have a question. So the, um, do we have a budget for the, like, the small animal classes for, um, like Ms. Hauser? They see like her fish and turtles and different things like that. Do we have a, she has a budget that actually helps to.
Yeah, all the classes have classroom budgets and then part of what Kim would have as well is Carl Perkins funds, which is career technical education funds, federal level.
I figure if she had them, you just.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none. Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
I'll go yes as well. Is there any public input?
Nope.
We'll move on to 4.11, which is the Maiso Mani staff presentation, social thinking.
Okay, let's do it.
That's like an old car, takes some time to warm up. Once it gets going, it's usually reliable. Be patient, Mr. Green.
It's one of these strange patients. I gave you that verbal cue.
Let me, uh, I'm just gonna introduce Karen and Kelly really quick. Karen Green serves as a speech and language pathologist at Maiso Elementary and at, here at the middle high school. She also does some work at Blackhurst Elementary with some of the assessments with her younger students who raise the speech and language. Kelly Santel, um, special education teacher at Maiso Elementary School. Really her focus this year is with, um, fourth and fifth graders, but deals with a lot of our EBD students. And these two, they're gonna talk about their social thinking and what they do with kids. But I also want to emphasize, they do a lot more than that at Maiso School. They work wonderfully with our staff. They provide a lot of strategies with, to our regular classroom teachers, which just makes a huge difference. And I appreciate them both very much. So I'll just turn the floor over to them and let them show their stuff over there.
Karen, so here we go, social thinking. What is social thinking? So I have you start, I'm gonna read it to you, so just read that first bullet point and then I'll start talking after that. So what does this mean? Basically, this means that our students are learning how to share space with others in a socially acceptable way. And if you notice, I did highlight that it does include social emotional learning, which does support social emotional learning standards. So it's a nice bridge to that and helps support that learning as well. We tell our kids our main goal is my behavior impacts the thoughts and feelings of others. Many of them only see life from their perspective and do not understand or realize that what they do and what they say impacts all the people around them. Some of the sub-goals that we have under that overarching goal is instead of just needs thinker, I can think of others. Kind of again pointing out what I just said about they tend to only think about themselves and not how so much how it affects the other. I can use my behaviors to help other people be successful. A lot of them are learning that you need to be a gracious loser and you need to be a gracious winner. That they may be not supporting somebody else when they are saying, "Oh, I really wanted that." So by them learning to say, "That was awesome. I'm happy for you," that is supporting that other person and helping them become successful. And finally, I can share the conversation and respect another's point of view. A lot of our kiddos love to talk about themselves and their topics, but may not realize that everybody else would love a 10 to 15 minute conversation on traits. So learning part of that and to know that other people may just have a different opinion from what they have. Our students are third through fifth graders that are already identified as special education students and who would describe them as blissfully unaware of the fact that their behaviors impact other people. Not even just their behaviors, but their words, their tone, their body language, any part of it. They also tend to be what we recall a right fighter. They are determined that they are right every second of the day and struggle to think about another person's perspective. They also would like to insist on always having the last word. So they're kids that really struggle with their social thinking. You can see in this early picture, we might have identified the right crew because only one student is actually looking at the teacher that's teaching when we started. We have kids who are slumped on the table, one standing looking like a soldier staring in completely opposite direction, some faces, um, head and hands. There are kids that really struggle to think about how they should act in an academic group. But in a lot of coaching and sport, you can see we have moments of brilliance where we have the majority of our kids paying attention to an academic or instructional lesson. A lot of time and support goes into building these behaviors for this population of students. Our resource lessons happen twice a week with Karen, so for social thinking, and they're about 30 minutes. But the huge asset we have for our group is that our educational assistants stay and participate in the lesson. The reason this is so incredibly valuable is that they are with the kids all throughout the day. They are then able to carry over the common language for our social thinking group that we use to instruct. They are able to hold the kids accountable for being social thinkers in every single situation. And they're able to help us design authentic lessons that will help the kids have more success in this school setting and for their entire lives. While we teach social thinking with the design of helping our kids be more successful in school, so it often looks like academic lessons, we also know that this population of students tend to break down in less structured environments, specifically recess. And so some of our lessons are designed very authentically to teach them the skills that they need to navigate social situations in a less structured environment. Within a four-spirit game, you have to be able to graciously win if you are in the king's spirit the entire time. You have to be able to walk away if you've lost and gotten out. You have to be able to navigate a discrepant call if you each have your own opinion. You also have to be able to adjust your play if you're one of the best social thinkers to support other students who are less successful. Those skills need to be directly taught.
So why do we teach this? Our ultimate goal is to have our students be adults who are productive, contributing members of society. We need, uh, we're trying to help them learn to make and maintain friendships, to navigate all social interactions with both peers and adults, to problem solve within those social interactions, and most importantly, to learn the social skills, the hidden social skills that they did not pick up naturally, so that they are appropriate and follow social norms. We started this by following Michelle Garcia Winters, Think Social book, it's the red one down on the side there, following her curriculum. As we were working on this, we realized there were many little skills that we knew our students really needed and we wanted to target. So we started adding things that are very specific to our group of kids. And lately, we've added a Color My Conversation, which is another curriculum, which looks at and breaks down how to have a conversation and all the nuances you need to have within a conversation, so they can do that appropriately with others. Some of our celebrations that we have and how we know that we're making success and we're making gains is this past Friday, I was in a classroom supporting different students and one of our students was in there. He had a substitute EA and I knew this EA did not know him like I do. And he was starting to act out a little bit and trying to talk over the teacher as she was giving instruction. So I went over to him, I gave him some deep pressure by putting my hands on his shoulders and I whispered in his ear, "Social thinking." And the student sat up and he closed his mouth and he started to listen and allow the teacher to finish the instructions. So that was a huge plus for us. Another one is we were finished with a lesson one day, a couple weeks ago, and one of the students who was sitting, he leaned over his chair like this and he said, "That was a lot of fun." He gave me a high five. When we started this group in January, the student did not respond to me at all. He'd never talked to me. I was just a non-adult to him at that time. And then the last example I have is another student was in the OTPT room with the aide. The aide needed to step out. I stepped in so she could leave. And he started playing with some toys that were up on top of the shelf. And I said, "Yeah, mm, no, I don't think you're supposed to be playing with that. That's why it's tucked away. Please leave it alone." It took me three times to give him that redirection, but he didn't. And this student again, never responded to me prior to that or prior to our social thinking group.
And for my students, I often look at behavior data and I look at the success that I can see in the numbers. And to tell you about one of the students that has now been participating in social thinking, when he was a third grader, he started the year by this time in October with 30 major behavior referrals that impacted a bunch of other kids and impacted the school significantly. Last year in fourth grade, he had cut it down, I'm sorry, it was 20, then he cut it down to 10. And then the success this year is so far at the same time of the year from third to fourth and fifth grade. He has only had two major behavior referrals, so he's making significant progress. And I also look at it, how my students are getting along with other kids. And fourth grade, I hear that there were a lot of parent requests and concerns about the relationships that happened in the classroom. And in fifth grade, teachers got zero requests. The kids were that much more successful. So the highlight for me as a teacher, when I'm very invested in their success is the fact that they are included more often in a general education environment and they are developing friendships and partnerships that can last them their entire life.
So where do we go from here? Um, right now, Julie Warner, the psychologist, and I are looking to expand to other students, the grade area students who are not special ed, but are a little bit more than what the regular teacher can handle by themselves. Um, so we're thinking of an RTI group, but again, that is just something that was, we just started talking about last week. So trying to branch out and support more of our students, hoping to catch them before they would need any further intervention from us. Any questions, comments?
I have a comment because I got an email from a staff member last year who said, "Have you seen the miracle that's happening in Kelly Santel's room?" They were referring to the social thinking group. And I was familiar with some of the data around some of the students. And then when I went in there and saw what you guys did, it was, it was jaw dropping. And, and you're right, the ability of, you know, a group like that to shape behavior for a few kids and its impact on not only their life, but the rest of the building is, is huge. So thank you very much for all the work.
Real quick too, I think from a board level, something that needs board acknowledgement is the fact that this journey really, in weird ways, started two school years ago when we were in a much different place. And we're trying to work through some challenges as a district. And what the board allowed us to do and supported us to do was for Mr. Green, as the principal, to get the resources that he needed in terms of staff, to try to reshape what that environment was looking like. And the fruits of that are we were able to bring, and Karen is obviously a resource. It has been through the board's support, we were able to bring in professionals who have competency and can work with other professionals and our children to provide this type of programming. And Kelly was a huge part of that and has done a great job in collaborating with Karen and with others in doing that. So just from a board level, to know that, yes, you're, you're impacting your belief in myself or Dale or whomever when we say like, we need something. It's true. And I think the proof in this situation is phenomenal. Where we've come from in a couple of years and the progress and the difference in that environment. So kudos to the staff members for executing. It's hard work, so thank you to both of you and your teammates. But thanks to the board for your support as well, because without that, we wouldn't be in this place right now. So thank you. Thank you, ladies. Just stay cozy. Mr. Moore is gonna present now.
Just bear with me while we get set up here.
I know, it's very cute. Yeah.
I'm gonna switch these here. I'll set up a certain way. If I have to click and read, I have to have it just so.
Yes, fine, here.
I know. Um, all right, so a while back, a couple weeks ago, Jordan asked if I would look at some of our screen assessment data and just kind of report on that. So if you had a chance to look at it, it is a ton of information. I'm not gonna spend a ton of time on each slide giving detailed explanation, because that's not what I was tasked to do. I was just to report on the information. So what I'm gonna do on each slide is I'm gonna just kind of highlight, as soon as we get to all the graphs and things, I'll just kind of highlight a few things and then just move on. Okay, if that works for you. And then at the end, if we have specific questions, then we can go there. All right? So we'll talk about the forward exam first. So forward exam, like it says, grades three through eight in ELA and math. Okay, and then in grades four and eight, they add science to that. And then in four and eight, they add social studies, but also 10th graders take social studies as well. So it's a little strange how that works out, but that's the first thing we're gonna take a look at. Next, we're gonna look at the ACT, which everybody is pretty familiar with. Um, the one thing that I thought was interesting is, is over on the right hand side there, it says, "Prior to the ACT being required, only 70% of graduates in Wisconsin took it, because it wasn't something that was given to all the other 11th graders." Um, and really, everything I've read is really all about equity, right? Giving every 11th grader that opportunity really opens a lot of doors for some kids that wouldn't have access to it before. So that's a really big piece of that, I think. Then we're gonna look at the ASPIRE. We're gonna look at the ASPIRE in ninth and 10th grade, ELA reading, math and science. They didn't record, report on writing, so I can't speak to that at this point. This is different from like the ACT ASPIRE that they do at Maiso with elementary kids. That's more of a periodic check where this is a summative at the end of the year required, where that one is just a local one. So that data is not in here just for, for your information. So let's get to it here. Um, we're gonna start with the forward, like I said. Forward, again, we're gonna focus just on Maiso first, so third, fourth and fifth. Um, let's do it. Okay, so how I tried to organize it is we go Maiso and then the state first, and then we'll branch out into more stuff. So, so here, um, the, the highlights here are we have less students in that below basic category, which is good. But we have more students who are proficient in this ELA skill, which is good. Then thinking of, um, ELA, they, they break it apart into proficiency, so proficient or not proficient. And that is, let me just jump back here for a minute. So how they calculate proficiency is the proficient and the advanced, they just get those two columns together when they calculate it. So highlight here obviously is we have less kiddos who are not proficient and more who are proficient. So that's a good thing there. Then moving on to math. So math, again, we have more proficiency, more kiddos who are advanced than the state. And we have less in the below basic and basic category, which is good as well. And then again, looking at proficiency side by side, either proficient or not proficient, we have less in the not and more in the yes, they are proficient, which is all good news for us. So that's again third, fourth and fifth. But then we look at science and at Maiso, that's strictly the fourth grade class taking that, okay? So when we look at science, um, we have a very big, um, I don't have my gap, but a lot more proficiency than the state, which is pretty awesome to see. And then, um, again, same thing, greater proficiency and fewer students who are not proficient when it comes to the science assessment. Moving on to social studies. So same type of thing, okay? High proficiency and advanced and fewer in that basic and below basic category, which is great. Okay, and then again, so looking at those side by side, we have less in the not proficient and more in the proficient, which is cool. So that's just when we look at our school compared to the state. Now we're gonna break it apart a little bit and add a few more schools, and this is where it gets a little visually overwhelming, so I apologize in advance. But what I did was I took art school and then compared it to all the elementaries in our conference. So when you look at it like that, it's a little, a little more to look at here. And I tried to go a little more in depth, so for these ones that look like this, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna tell you kind of our percentage of proficiency here. And then kind of figure out which school had the least amount, the most, and then how the state, for just kind of a reference as to how schools do here. So, um, Maiso, um, if you, again, so you add those, the orange or the green one together, which is how we calculate proficiency. That's how the state does it anyhow. Um, we've got 43.3% of our kiddos proficient in ELA. The most in our group here is in Belleville. They had 54.8% of their kiddos in elementary proficient. Um, the least was Waterloo. They had 29.1. The state was kind of in the middle of all that with 40.7. So long story short, um, again, our proficiency level is higher than at the state. So same kind of situation with math. Um, math, we were at 53%. The highest school was 63.1% proficiency. Um, the lowest was 37.4. And the state again was right there in the middle at 46.1% proficiency. Moving along. In science, again, just the fourth graders in science. We sit at 67.4% of our fourth graders are proficient in science. The highest was actually 72%. The lowest was 30.3 and then the state was 52.7% proficiency. So again, above state there. Social studies was, we had 73.1% proficiency with our fourth grade class, which actually was the most in this category, so well done, fourth graders there. The, the least amount of proficiency there was 33.3 totaled and then the state was 52.1. All right? And now, we also want to look at schools that are around us, because not all those schools in our conference are close in proximity. So we've got Middleton, Mount Hore, Hoover Valley District, and then South Prairie, just so you're where I am here. So in ELA, for us in the surrounding schools, again, we were at 43.3. The highest was 61.6, lowest 36.2, and then the state was 40.7, but it's all calculated there. With math, we've got, we sit at 53% proficiency. The highest in this category is 77.3 and then the, the lowest is 39.6 and then the state came in at 46.1. Okay, then looking at science here. Uh, we were at 67.3. Highest level was 73.6, smallest 58.1, and our state came in at 54%. And then the final one for Maiso, again, so social studies. So again, fourth graders only on this one. We were again, as we remon- from the other one, 73.1. The highest was just a little above us at 74.4. Um, the least amount of proficiency there was 40% and then the state came in at 52.1. So just again, demonstrating just the ranges of all those scores in our surrounding schools. Okay, so now, keeping with forward, we're gonna look at middle school. Okay, kind of the same gist of how it's gonna go here, okay? So if we look at our ELA performance at the middle school, um, we had more proficient and advanced than the state. And also another highlight, we had less students in the no test category, which is great. Okay, and then again, so we're looking at proficiency or not proficient there. So again, lower in the not proficiency, higher in the proficiency, which is great. And then math, we had again higher proficiency in advanced, which is excellent. Um, and then with math, we had again higher proficiency, lower numbers to, we're not proficient there. So now when we look at science, that's eighth only, right? So, um, look at that, we have a very, very high number of kiddos who are advanced compared to the state, which is pretty cool. Um, and then kind of the order and everything else, which is where we want to be there. And then when we look at it side by side there, so we have much less kiddos who are not proficient and a lot more in the proficient category, so that's good news too. So same type of scenario, when we look at schools in our conference in the middle school that took, ooh, that's a lie. Forget what I just said. Sorry, social studies here. Again, higher proficiency in advanced, lower in all the others, which is good. Jumped ahead of myself there. I was just so excited to report on that. So higher proficiency and lower not proficiency with that one, okay? Okay, now we're looking at everybody else in our conference. So we came in at 54.2% in the ELA. Um, the highest in this group here was 61.4 proficient and then the lowest was 34.2, where the state had 42.7. And then when we take a look at math, um, we had 48.6%. The highest was 53.7, lowest was 30.5, and the state was 42.2. And we look at science. We had 79.6, subsequently is also the highest that we, in this group, which is fantastic. Lowest amount of proficiency here was 46.3% proficient and the state came in at 56.4, which is cool. And then when we look at social studies, um, so again, we had 75.5% of our class that was proficient. Also the highest here as we look amongst these other districts. Um, the smallest amount was 42.6, where the state was 53.6. And then we take a look again at surrounding schools. Again, we were 54.2 in ELA. Highest was 59.4. The, the least amount of proficiency here was 37.2 and the state was 42.7. For math, uh, we had 48.6% proficiency. Highest was 60%, the lowest amount was 41.5 and the state came in at about 42.2. And then when we look at science, again, 79.6, um, again, the highest in our surrounding schools as well. The least.
Take that, Middleton. That's what I just said. Pretty much the word.
You said it, not me. 53.4% proficiency was the smallest amount and the state was 56.4. And then in social studies, um, we can hear it in here in a moment if you'd like, or. 75.5 was our, uh, was our percentage and we beat them by a point one overall, which is great. The least amount was 52.3 and then the state was 53.6. Then we move along to the ACT ASPIRE. I only have high score. I only have high score, but I did it, so. Okay, here we go. So again, we have a high proficiency in advanced, which is great. Again, wanna emphasize that low to no, no test category. Okay? So, all ninth and tenth graders took the Aspire, which is fantastic. Then, when we look at math, we had a very high proficiency percentage as compared to the state. So again, looking at our conference for ELA, we had fifty-five point nine. The highest was fifty-seven point three, lowest was thirty-one point seven, and the state was forty point eight. Then, when we take a look at the math, we were at fifty-three. The highest was fifty-seven point three, smallest amount was twenty-nine point seven percent proficiency, where the state was forty point four. Okay, and then, surrounding schools. So, the Aspire just reported, that I could see from Wise Dash, was just ELA and math, just for reference. That's why we're not getting into those other things as well. So again, surrounding schools here, we were, again, fifty-five point nine percent proficient. The highest was fifty-nine point seven. The state was actually the lowest at forty point eight amongst our surrounding schools, which I thought was interesting. And then, when we take a look at math, we were at fifty-three percent proficiency. The highest one was sixty-four point one. And again, the state came in with the lowest amount at forty point four percent proficiency. And then, finally, the ACT. So here we go. With the ACT for ELA, we had a higher amount of proficiency in advanced and all that, which is all good stuff. Okay. Then, when we look at math, high proficiency again. I would again wanna point out that low, actually no, no test category, which is fantastic as well. All right? Taking a look at science, we had pretty high levels of advanced compared to the state, I thought. And another feather in our cap, no, no testing kiddos in that category, which is good. And then, when we take a look at those in our conference, so for ELA, we were at forty-nine point one. The highest was sixty-two point three. The smallest amount of proficiency there was eighteen point seven, and the state was thirty-seven point nine. And then, when we take a look at math in our conference, we were at thirty-six point four percent proficiency. The highest was fifty-two point seven. The smallest amount was six point six percent proficiency, where the state was twenty-nine point eight. So, kind of low numbers all around in the ACT with math. Except for one school, but we need to go to that. And then, when we look at the science portion of it, we were at forty percent proficiency there. The highest was fifty point nine, the smallest was twenty-one point four, where the state was thirty-one point five when we're measuring those proficiency levels. And finally, then, when we look at our surrounding schools with the ACT in ELA, we were at forty-three point three percent. The highest was sixty-one point six. Smallest was thirty-six point two, where the state was forty point seven percent. And then math, again, which was kind of low all around, we sat at thirty-six point seven percent proficiency. The highest was fifty-six point five. The lowest was twenty-six point six, and the state came in at twenty-nine point eight. And finally, again, yes, finally. Looking at science, we were at forty percent proficiency. The highest was fifty-eight point one percent proficiency. Smallest amount was actually the state at thirty-one point five. And now, my friends, is a giant overview. That was the Fireholt version. That was the Reader's Digest version. If you need the full one, I don't wear your turban, I don't know. Any questions about any of this stuff? That I can try and-
I have a general question.
Sure.
So, you know, with the math scores, is that something that students just aren't prepared for? Are we not, you know, is there something that is different on the score than what they're preparing for? And why are the scores for that so high, or so low, I should say?
Good question. I'm gonna ask my good friend Liz Dostal for specifics on that, because I haven't dealt into. Sorry for touching the spot.
So, no, I think math scores, particularly on the ACT, tend to be low. It's set up, so it's sixty math questions in sixty minutes. A lot of questions. And I, timing plays a big part in it. If you are not used to taking a timed test, particularly with math, there is a method to getting through it and making sure you answer every question. So, part of that is, part of it is that, and then I also think that, like, that's part of the reason why we shifted to badge math this year, is because we weren't seeing kids getting the mastery on some key topics in a traditional math instruction study that are highly valued on the ACT, and they're actually highly valued when you start your post-secondary education. So I think with some better alignment of our math, with what is tested and what's highly valued, we should start to see scores start to go up. But, like, with the practice ACT, I was doing interpretations with juniors last week, and one of the things that we looked at was if they had clusters of answers or questions that they got wrong. Well, there was a significant amount of kids that probably had to rush to finish because they would get the last six answers wrong on the test, and they admit that they guessed. So, I think pacing is a huge issue for them. And actually, the ACT is the first timed test that they take. Every other test that they've taken up until this point has been as much time as you need. And it's hard.
Yeah.
I have a question. So when you're trying to draw conclusions from this for needs of application, and you see some areas like your fourth grade social studies and your eighth grade science that were kind of off the charts in proficiency, do you kind of look to, is it the curriculum? Is it our methods on how we're teaching it? Is it maybe just the staffing and the cohesion of a work group? Or what kind of conclusions do you draw when there's an area of proficiency as compared to the math or, you know, another segment where all of a sudden, social studies and science and in specific areas are proficient? What kind of conclusions do you draw?
Funny you ask that question.
Or, or maybe just how, how you go about it? You know, we have this, now where do we go from here? How do we, what do we, you know, do with this?
Well, we started asking questions. For one, I think for me to get a look at trends over time. So is that a consistent trend that we're seeing over the course of the last three years? That we really value that piece? The amount of time we're spending on social studies, science, we look at that piece, could be different than maybe when we compare the two other schools. The science piece, I'd like to think our collaboration with Moon has something to do with it. And our kids do well in that capacity. There's a lot of energy around science, I would say, early on from third grade through middle school because of that piece. So, we talked to our kids, and they, they are scientists when they're in third grade. And I, and I think, you know, the ownership piece with that, and the inquiry piece, which we really emphasize, I think helps the thinking process as they go through that. But, you know, you look, look at it, one of the things, and actually Liz said today in our meeting, which really has me curious, you know, the social studies piece, and we score high there, a lot of that is reading tests. And how they read, and a lot of the sciences, the graphing, you know, reading graphs, that sort of thing. So you've got to break down the skill set. And we obviously are doing some, some really good things in those areas. How do you match those up across the board, I think, is, you know, questions that, you know, we'll have some discussion about.
I think it goes to, like, for A three in particular, it goes to the alignment and the content that's being taught in middle school. So they do a lot, they do life sciences, and then earth sciences, and then the physical sciences, so chemistry and physics. So they're getting the right amount of exposure to all of the pure sciences in a good sequence. What I am interested in looking at, particularly with science, is how can we get kids to make the connection between the graphs they're reading in science and the math they see? Because I get a sense that they, they understand the graphs of science a lot better than they understand the graphs when we see them in math. Because when you look at some of our math sub-scores, I don't see the proficiency with statistics and data and probability that I should be seeing if they're doing so well in science. So how do we put that transfer from science into math? So, that's one of the things that I think we could leverage through math scores.
Like what Dale said, though, is you're always gonna have that interest level. It's easy for somebody, historically even, to remember a fact in social studies or what happened, or to take interest and ownership in those, whereas math, you know, it's more analytical and challenging. And so, at some point, it's probably just not as fun for a lot of people, but, yeah.
Any other questions for Scott?
Just one more. Just when do you tear the stuff apart with staff, then? At what point does that take place?
So we've been doing, like, our, the faculty six through twelve have been looking at last spring's forward, last spring's interim Aspire results, the summative ACT results, and the ACT through professional learning communities. That's the data that they started the year with. And now, we just did the, so, Enid and I did score interpretations for all kids last week. We gave the results back to them through classrooms. So now, that, that next tier of data is coming into teachers to go through, through PLC again. The nice thing is, is it's not, it's nice, but it's not very dramatically different from what the spring testing has been, so it's a confirmation of, yep, that's, that's where kids are. That's where they end of the year, that's where they're starting the year. So where do we go from here to increase their skills?
Our simple collaborative teams are in service last, last week. We spent the afternoon looking at data, trying to dissect what it means. So, never enough time, but, you know.
Yeah. So just summarize that, talking points. To me, you know, our region and our conference overall score well. From a local perspective, basically across the board, we're above the state average. And then on top of that, very comparable with neighboring districts and with conference schools. So in terms of academics and the performance and the opportunities that our kids have, to say that they're on par with like schools and with neighboring schools is absolutely true, based on the data. The key piece, I think, for us, and we talk about it, is to focus on growth. And how much can we help each individual student grow? Because, to me, I think to us, you have a bit more ability to mold growth than you do sometimes outcomes. So how do we keep helping kids grow? And then I think the important part for all of us to remember, and this is just in light of some of our in-service stuff and dialogue, is to remember, when we look at those numbers, that those numbers are kids. So as we talk percentages and think, in my mind, I think of a handful of faces and what opportunities are we providing, and how can we help those kids have more opportunities when they're done with their experience here? And I think it's important to think of it that way, because sometimes you're just like, ah, it's just another number. Well, it's not. That number's a handful of kids. And if they're not meeting those goals, then what doors are open and what doors are closed for them? So I think that's what makes it real, and that is a sense of, like, obligation and borderline pressure to help them get there, because that's when it feels more real. But I absolutely feel like there's a lot of things in place that our principals have done and are bringing in collaboration with their teachers that makes me feel good, should make the district feel good that, that it is improving, and I think will continue to improve. Thank you, staff.
Oprah. So-
Same way.
Let's move on, shall we? So, the other topic tonight, I just wanna kind of talk with you about is kind of our 4K program and some potential things we've been thinking about in terms of moving forward with it, and how it might look differently based on some kind of information that we've gathered starting this summer and then recently legislatively as well, just to see what we can do. So, to begin with, I wanna talk to you about kind of why, I feel like it's important, that we know the reasoning behind this exploration of 4K. So, like I said, in the summertime, it was brought to my attention there were some families who had a barrier of childcare. They couldn't enroll with us because they just didn't have an option for either the morning or the afternoon, depending on what section of 4K they were in. So they just frankly decided to open and enroll elsewhere as it was closer to their work. It wasn't just one or two families, it was more than five. After talking with Jordan and kind of the other administrators about it, Dale brought up a great point of, once those kids are out, what's the likelihood that they're going to come back, right? You've established friendships, you're in those routines in those schools, like, you may not ever decide to come back. So, we started talking about ways we might be able to help that and, and, and work with that a little bit. So, another reason why, as Jordan pointed out to me, we really wanna close those educational gaps for vulnerable students. Now, I'm not saying all preschoolers are vulnerable students, but I'll get into some research that kind of shows that that's absolutely right, that it's, pre-K is not accessible for everybody. And so we're just trying to, again, make that more accessible for everybody. Also, as a result of the future search, there was that goal of innovation, innovating teaching styles and accommodating diverse learning styles. So, this would also kind of support that as well. And in terms of closing gaps, it really is the best way to do it, from all the research that I've done, is to kind of expand our pre-K, so it's more equitable for everybody, okay? And there's a link there that I'm not gonna click on now, but it's a, it's an article from the Capital Times, I believe, just kind of talking legislatively about what's happening in the government about 4K options. So again, like I said, I'm gonna just briefly touch on research. I'm not gonna go over every single bullet, but it is there for you to look at as well. But really, the striking one to me is on the far, kind of your right there, that children that participate in high-quality preschool programs have better health, social, emotional, and cognitive outcomes than those that do not. And when we think about those kids not being able to participate, our program, or just staying home, whatever they do, and they come missing, and they're already kind of maybe lacking those skills, and that gets difficult to try and then throw the academics into the mix. So, we're gonna, again, try and, try and open that up a little bit more, more from the research. There's a ton out there, but I just, I had a few more things. So again, So again, the one that I was drawn to is, is the one on far right that said, the ones that participate in preschool are less likely to have to utilize special education services or a routine and they're great. So that's also a thing we'd like to go for as well. And then even more, believe it or not. So.
Scott Moore production.
There's a strong link to the economy in the future, when these kids are going to get out there, right? So even in 2015, having early learning provides society with a return investment, eight dollars, sixty cents for a dollar spent. So I don't know what that number is now, I couldn't find it, but I imagine it is a little higher than that. And one thing that isn't in here that Jordan sent to me, and I just forgot to put it in, but I did write it down, there was a study that was done that reported out on educational equity and there are sixteen key indicators that they identified in this article of equity. And then they kind of made a recommendation of how you can kind of make it more equitable. And the, one of the ones was the ninth indicator and it's equitable access to high quality early childhood education. So again, the research is just kind of out there a lot in favor of, of doing something more with preschool. So after a lot of discussion based on all these things, Jordan and I have kind of narrowed things down a bit. And I want to be upfront, I recognize that families have varying needs and so we want to be flexible when we talk about options. So the options that we were thinking, just, you know, putting it out there, was having our 4K students provided an all day, every day option for them. And keeping a half day option for those who are just not interested in a full day option because my guess is there are some who are not, and that's perfect. Okay? With a full day option, we would make sure students are fed, obviously we're not going to have the thing start, that would be terrible, but half day would look exactly how it does now. That wouldn't change at all. Okay? So the big change would just be that all day, every day option. So then how would that look personalized? Well, super good question. What that would look like was we would have to add a full-time teacher and probably, well not probably, for sure, at the very least, a full-time DA as well. So that's just kind of from a personnel standpoint, what we would look at for that. And then when we think about if this is something we want to move forward with, how is this going to look? So first, there's a survey that's going to go out to families later this month or early in November, was actually brought on by Karen Carlock, who runs the Children's Museum. You can talk to that in a second, if you don't mind, just to give the background on that. But after, after that, the results of that, and you know, if the board is interested in moving forward, we would, we would decide that in December or January and then start communicating how it would look with families in January and February with hopes that, and this may be my ambition, that's okay, but to start that in the fall of 2020. So that school year is when we would start with that, whatever it is, or continue with what's going on, which is okay too. Okay? And then if you want to, there's other resources. So.
So what would, what would you see the kids in the full day program getting that they, you know, that they're not getting in the two or two and a half hours?
So when I was teaching in A grade, they did, they had this option for families. And so the morning was just like our half day is now, where they're incidental learning, they're learning through stations, they're learning through play, all those things. There was lunch break, there was recess. We were able to get kiddos in our special schedule as we had an art music choir teacher at our schools only, so we were able to do that. And then the afternoon was a rest time and then playtime and then when it was time to go, you went home on the bus or got picked up, so.
So they're, both sections are doing the same activities?
Correct. Yep, yep. So there's no, you know, upper hand or anything to, to go full day if that's an option.
Two things. First, I'm so glad you brought this up because not knowing any numbers whatsoever, but in my mind, I feel like we've had a consistent trend of influx from 4K to kindergarten for that exact reason, that you have a bunch of people that open and roll 4K that don't have the means. And then once full day kindergarten starts, oh, now we can go back into the school district. So I've been hearing that for a long time. And it's, it's refreshing when somebody else takes the initiative and doesn't start at the board saying, oh, you got to do this, but yet it started kind of naturally like that. So I'm, I'm all for this. And two, what if you survey parents and you have an outstanding, you know, kind of effect to this and more people want all day than half day? Do you switch or any of, I don't know how, you know, what if seventy percent of people want all day?
Well, thank goodness.
Do we have the capability to switch things around?
I mean, so again, very prematurely, but so hiring that, we already have one full-time preschool teacher, we would hire another full-time and then we'd have that half. So essentially we have two and a half sections. Certainly could accommodate a lot of kiddos either way, I believe.
And you think they're on board or are you staying staffed?
Not sure. Good question, but.
That's.
Nope, and you know, yeah, once, once we know where we're going, then it's time to bring it out there. My staff already goes, I talked to them a lot on Wednesday, just so they didn't hear it first from reading board adjutants, but so, yes.
Then we have the space.
We would make the space. If we were in Nevada, we'd get a porta potty and throw it around. That's always my running joke, which are portals, let's do it in China.
So do you mean in all seriousness, from a space standpoint? Some of those rooms we have are incredibly large and part of their design was to be flexible and have movable walls and things like that. I mean, those, those rooms are the equivalent of like two plus room right now. So we have the space. And to your question, Barb, as we've talked about this, I mean, really what we're just wanting is to make you aware and to at least have you understand why we think we should explore this further. But as the information comes forward, I mean, if we survey and, you know, we get sixty responses and fifty-five want a full day option, well then clearly we need to reflect on that data and say like, is half day even going to be an option? Or conversely, if, you know, it's fifty-fifty, it's thirty and thirty, well, I mean, yes, there will have to be much more intense thought and decision-making put into it. But for now, it's just trying to meet the needs, as Scott said, the varying needs of parents. Interesting, this came up at our legislative meeting, which I sent an email to follow up about from last week. One of the districts in the room actually had an identical situation a couple of years ago. And he said the first year they had about twelve that took the half day option, the second year they had eight, and the next year they didn't have a half day option because for parents, kind of once they got over that philosophical hurdle, the practicality of it was, this is a win for many reasons. So I don't know that we'll be the same, but that was another experience that a similar sized school district had within the last couple of years. And then the other piece, which I know I mentioned about in the legislative update, I mean, the notion that this could be fully funded as early as next fall, well that makes it, I would say, even more palatable, if you will, because our investment from a financial standpoint would then be minimal at best. Never mind the fact that I think the research and our kind of anecdotal experiential would tell us that this is good for kids. If the money's going to come with it at the state level, then I think it becomes an even easier response because there will be plenty of others that transition and offer this as well.
Another question. Dale, do you notice that after the daycare moved out of Mezzo, did you see more kids open and roll or not come in once they didn't have that daycare option right there? Did that seem to really affect that?
I didn't see more it impacted.
It didn't impact a whole lot?
No. And there were some other factors too from the situation, you know, so there was some kids coming our way at the same time. It didn't jump out to me.
Okay. I didn't know if it was a drastic change, you know, if they had that option right there at the school where they could just walk right down to daycare versus, you know, having to find and transportation to get them somewhere.
That would continue to be a situation we need to be aware of though, I mean, because the, obviously the work day of the parents is going to be longer than the, than the school day of the kids. And either working with a local childcare centers or something to accommodate a before and after care program. And I know there are some things going on.
So that's part of the survey and that's how this all started with the notion of conversation with the Children's Museum because they've had people approach them about having a before and after school program. Karen wasn't that interested in it, but is now becoming perhaps more interested. So that's where our meeting started, but then we quickly started, the amoeba was encapsulating other directions as well. And talked about this notion of full day 4K and then wraparound services, not just for 4K, but at like a pre-K through fifth grade level, what would wraparound services potentially look like in the community? So when this survey goes out to district families with students in that grade band, our intention is that it'll include questions in there about the before and after school care and what parents perceive the need is. I think the important thing, at least for now, unless the board tells me otherwise, we're not in a position to give grants for before or after school programs, just because of where we stand financially as a school district in terms of poverty levels. So our partnership would have to be a partnership with some sort of provider where that would be a service that people would pay for, not that we would foot the bill for before and after school programs for kids. Because sometimes people hear that and they think free childcare, which we're not in a position financially to qualify for those programs where it's funded. So that would be an investment, obviously, which I just, I don't believe we're in a position to make that investment right now, nor do I think we have to. But if we can partner with others and work on options and what that may look like, there could be more clarity in that as well for the school and for the community moving forward. So that's a part of the survey as well. In addition to finding out if they'd be interested in either the half day or the full day option for 4K, is to assess what the need would be for wraparound services.
And 4K still is not a requirement, it still wouldn't be a requirement, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that was another thing I included in that email about the other legislation regarding the potential for three-year-olds, which if you just take a step back and think about that, that's a whole other animal and a dirty one. So that does not seem to be getting as much support as the notion of funding 4K, which I'll just admit, the thought of having three-year-olds in a 4K program, that's a whole new dynamic with potty training and everything else. So our plan at this point would be is to kind of push forward and gathering more information and doing some more networking and like Scott had with his timeline, share those findings as the fall goes on. And if we're going to make the decision and move forward on this, we would have to do that by, I mean, we think right around Christmas or shortly thereafter, from a staffing and a facilities and a communication standpoint. But I think that's realistic. We're not, we're in a good place right now, so long as people are okay with further exploration.
Yeah, for sure.
This is Scott Moore Show, everyone. Thank you, sir.
I don't have to?
You've been referenced.
Oh, I'll just say, look at, thank you. That's what I'm going to say.
All right, so it looks like we're moving on to five point one, which is the board president. I'd just like to say thank you guys all for your time again. We have a lot of other things to cover on the agenda, so I'll just kind of let it go. But you guys are all very valuable to the success of the campaign here, so thank you for, for being a part of this.
You as well, James.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to turn it over to Dale Green and let him dive into his Mezzo report.
I'll, my board report pretty short, but I do want to talk just a little bit about the SIR assessment. Back in July, my board report in July, I kind of, you know, gave you guys a heads up, we would be reviewing our RTI, just looking at ourselves, doing a self-assessment. We started that process on September twenty-seventh. Our team within, actually kindergarten through fifth grade, I think there were about ten of us in the, in the room that day. But we completed the SIR self-assessment with some support from the Wisconsin RTI Center and CISA II, just beginning our, looking at our own data in terms of measuring our academic and behavior implementation. And specifically, we looked at reading. So we just basically did a, did a fidelity check on are we doing what we want to be doing? What does our program look like? We have a follow-up meeting with those same two people on October twenty-ninth to review that data and then put a plan in place moving forward. So it was a good day. I think we learned a lot. It was good to have some honest conversations just about how we're, how we're doing business and what we look like. And I think we'll be healthier for it, you know, at the end of the year. So I'll keep you updated throughout the school year because there's a whole series of meetings that are really, you know, chung throughout the school year. So we'll have a nice report come about June as to where we're at with that. So also just included at Mezzo School, just highlighted some, part of our school improvement plan. You can see there just utilizing the rapid race strategy. And we worked on that again in October in service, so we're excited about that. And then last week, we had our first book study at Mezzo. We are reading Passionate Learners. The author is a seventh grade teacher currently in Oregon, Wisconsin. And she's fabulous in terms of just what she brings to the table. Kelly Crown and Josie Geischer, we got to hear her speak last year at the Title I Conference in Wisconsin Dells. And she recently spoke at the Madison Area Leading Council, so Kelly got to hear her again. So, so she's local, but what she brings to the table has brought a lot of great discussion amongst my staff. And we're just, we're just looking forward to exploring the book and how that may help us be better educators at Mezzo School. So we're excited about that. Any questions for me?
Thanks.
Thank you, Dale. May I?
Yeah, so in people's services, beginning with in-service that we had on October seventh, the morning was related to social justice and social emotional learning. Percy Brown, who is the director of Equity and Student Achievement for the Lumenton-Crossplains Area School District, he also spoke at the Board Retreat on September eleventh, came in and talked with both groups, so he separated the middle school, high school and elementary. Gave terrific presentations, very engaging, talking about history of equity in America, real-life examples from his own experiences, how we can facilitate learning, talked about the school, school system structures, the recognition of equity as a priority, challenging many preconceived notions of historical figures. That's one of the things that, that he does and makes people think very differently about some of the history and some of the things that we have taken for granted. And then just, you know, thinking differently about, about inclusion of all students. Then the middle school, high school, we have academic career planning and the platform Zello, which replaced career cruising, is the computer program that grade six through twelve will document their kind of journey of, you know, interests through interest inventories and then connecting those careers. And then connecting those careers, course selection, um, and, um, then college selection. Zello has, Zello has a lot of capability. You can, um, you can, um, have transcripts sent to colleges through Zello if you choose. Your, all your, your entire college search can be done through Zello. Um, it's, it, there's a, there's a load of possibilities that hopefully down the road, I think we'll be able to, um, incorporate into our, into our system. Sarah Butel also, um, talked and described the core exploration class in eighth grade, um, that will be using, uh, Zello. One of the things that she said because, um, you know, she started the core exploration class and she said, the kids have, you know, about this much worth of stuff now and it's in binders and folders and, and some of it's saved in various Google Docs. And kind of Zello, it will all be in one place. So, so this, you know, the, the group that comes out of eighth grade at the end of the year, they will be having been immersed in, in Zello. And then Kat Swanson, um, presented on alcohol, tobacco, drug abuse and suicide prevention. A TED Talk which she showed, um, was, was captivating, um, Johan Hari, um, and talking about, um, the, one of the takeaways that I had from that is that the opposite of addiction is connection. And, um, you know, too often we, you know, we treat addicts as, um, people who are at fault. But really, if we have, um, more ability to connect with, with young people before they get addicted to things like, um, you know, something online, substances, and if, if we can do that, we'll be much better off as a, as a school system and as a society. So, and then we, we had the opportunity to reflect, um, through the circle process, which is something you can really, you can hear more about, that we broke into circles. And talked, um, and, and had a chance to reflect, which also is a, was, was very powerful for the middle school, high school staff, based on, on the feedback that we received. Uh, elementary, uh, the social emotional learning extravaganza, um, Julie Horner and Aubrey Primo covered a lot of topics there. From Start with Alone, Nurture Heart, Second Step, The Best. And, uh, included an illustration of the multi-talented, from the multi-talented Julie Horner, um, of the, um, social emotional learning framework. Uh, it, it is impressive, I told Julie that it took, it can be thirty-five hours to do something like this. But, you know, she has some of the different programs that we have, um, here in the district that we, we spent some time on. And then one thing with, um, secondary level too, we, we kind of tied some of this to, um, the soft skills that, um, young people need for employment. So, so having secondary staff understand that, yeah, a lot of these things that, that we're working on will help students maintain relationships, but also, um, be successful on a, on a job. And, um, that's something that was, that is important, um, as, as we build skills. And then, um, Room to World, two stop league training, um, October ninth and seventeenth. So some of us went to that, um, at the EMS, um, included some first aid in there, um, and knowing what's inside our red buckets. And then upcoming events, Room to World three, um, uh, October twenty-fourth in the Step Room, we're gonna have a presentation by Dayton County Health. Um, e-cigarettes and vaping and then some online, online presentation on Dayton County Sheriff at least. Any questions?
Yeah, it is really good stuff.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore? I'm good, I rested my voice so I can. Um, so again, I always like to show your enrollment, um, we did get another kindergartner since last board meeting, so up to seventy-two of the little folks down in that wing. Sort of for a total of two forty-one. Upcoming events are listed there, I'm not gonna go through those, but they're there for your information. I just, I did want to highlight our, our fundraising that we did in the, in the beginning of the year because it was, kind of took me by surprise a little bit. In the amount that we, uh, were able to sell and got as a profit from that. So after it was all said and done, our school, um, sold over ten thousand dollars worth of stuff and are profiting over four thousand dollars worth of stuff. Which is wild considering last year, what do we profit on the magazine sales five hundred total? So, um, it's, our office is littered with all sorts of stuff. Which is fine.
Sounds good.
Yeah, it was, it does remind me actually, um, so I just wanted to highlight that for you.
That's just your numbers, right?
It is just our numbers at Black Earth, yeah, Mezzos are.
Well, half that.
Yeah, so it was pretty darn successful, I would say. Um, and then I, I also just have math results for you, I, I'm not gonna go through each because I don't want to talk about that anymore, but, um, any questions about that?
Um, with the numbers?
Yeah.
So that puts two of our kindergarten classes with twenty-four.
All three have twenty.
All three.
Oh, three, mm-hmm. Yep.
So something that.
They have mentioned it to me already.
Is that.
It is a lot.
That's a lot.
Especially talking if we're hiring somebody for an all-day, um, 4K position and the need for.
Yeah.
True.
And there are days where it feels like twenty-eight.
I know.
So.
I think, um, when we were at the, uh, the WASB event, um, in Sud Prairie and they walked us through their monstrosity of a building and, you know, I forget how many kids are in their district, about twenty-one? Eighty-five hundred or something? You know, so we're talking.
Yeah.
Just not even comparable, but their average class size, you know, he was talking twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four max. And this light bulb went off of our whole trying to maintain small class size and kind of this whole thing that we're trying to, you know, put out there as a small district and small class size. So with these incoming classes, we're pushing the envelope of really being able to, you know, set that as.
In part of that, I mean, becomes, to give other examples where we have thirteen, fourteen in the classroom as well, the, the understanding I think is, well, number one, a kid is not a kid as a kid. As much as for some people, they don't understand that, I mean, in some classrooms fifteen may feel like twenty-eight and in other rooms twenty-eight you can handle.
Totally, I'm just saying.
And I get it, but.
At a district level, you're putting out there this whole small class size kind of PR.
So if the board wanted, and I say this sincerely, if the board wanted to create a policy, I mean, there are districts that have hard cap policies that say, um, from pre-K through second grade, we won't have a class over twenty-two. From third through fifth grade, we won't have a class over twenty-five. I mean, those are things that are certainly options. With this situation, of course, as people started showing up later and later, and some heard it was like a joke, Scott would call me and say, well, let me guess, kinder.
Yep.
Why couldn't they be in first grade?
Or 4K for guns.
Yeah. I, I just offer that.
I'm just saying it was merely an observation and the timing, I think, as the light bulb went off the other night is to say, a lot of these, you know, districts that are expanding facilities have more room to split up there, you know, and so twenty-three, twenty-two is not small anymore. And it was just.
No, I'm.
Merely an observation.
I would say it's one of the, an observation because I've talked to the teachers and they have said there are some days where they have to take some deep breaths. But, I mean, they're, they kind of also understand that this was a bit of an anomaly and they're probably not gonna be tasked with a classroom that large every single year. And if they are, then we certainly need to, you know, address it, but.
Had we known there was gonna be seventy-two kids in that class in April, I promise you there wouldn't be reservations.
But so then the, the foreshadow, I mean, for, for future, then next year you're looking to have four?
Oh, I'm already thinking, so, but, you know, I just.
And that's one of the things, we have that flexible position where we have that fourth section right now at Black Earth.
Right.
That has basically followed student need.
Right.
It has been the old sage, um, class size reduction, that's basically been our sage teacher is because there were some significant student needs. But no, I mean, I, I was not trying at all, or I completely understand what you're saying. And I, I mean, I'm, I'm saying that sincerely, that those are, those are policy options that you certainly have, and some places they go that far. The, the nuance for us was the, uh, the July and August show-ups. A handful of them happened to show up and be kindergarteners. And that situation was just, so then in August, it's like, well, are we gonna add a fourth section kindergarten on August twenty-fifth? It could, is that going to be better with a late hire, splitting classrooms, changing people? We weren't convinced that that was gonna be a better option, but no, I agree that not, not what we'd ideally want, particularly at the kindergarten level.
Is this our largest class size now, our class number, five to eight?
Yeah. I don't think we have another one over seven in the district right now.
So I would say those are certainly things that we can think about and talk about, but in the meantime, if you do run into one of the kindergarten teachers, you just take the extra time to acknowledge that, hey, we know this is a little bit tougher because you have a larger class load that they were preaching.
Depending how many of the four Kers, uh, come back to us though, and roll out, or what that looks like, uh, they, they may only have to survive for one year. Because next year, the numbers are in the low forties at this point, it's probably these sections, it's probably snap.
Yeah.
So it is, it's that ebb and flow. Um, real quickly, just gonna hit on a few key things, uh, when you have that extra weekend with two pages worth of meetings, um, that you ran. The tech ed open house, current technical ed open house, um, just wanna thank once again the board for the support on the whole project and just moving forward with remodeling those spaces. Um, in terms of using our space wiser, and I think for more student-centered opportunities, that one was well done. Had a good turnout that night, a nice steady stream of people coming and going at night, maybe it was there as well, this was there as well all night. So that was very positive. The, uh, Facebook Live video that then archived and placed on Facebook, had over a thousand views on that. A lot of positive feedback on our, our page from people saying, you know, I think he looks good. So that was, that was a positive thing. It mentioned that there may be some, uh, changes with, uh, the direction of our food service leadership. Today notified, uh, proper that we're looking at our sixty-day window for canceling that contract and moving on. In-house, uh, offering for a director position. To me, as you enter into a contract for a director position, kind of the prerequisite expectation for that is some level of stability. Been here for two and a half years and we will have had three different directors, couple of subs. To me, that's not much stability, think we could do just as good, uh, if not better. So I don't believe that's advantageous for us at this point, given the investment and the lack of clarity that it produces for some people. It is a unique situation with the directors and employees in a different organization than all of the employees that he or she supposedly supervises. Our employees of the district, uh, that in itself conceptually is somewhat confusing. So we're making that transition. Uh, Matt mentioned the training, wanna publicly thank Mezzo EMS and then Katie Howell, our school nurse for organizing that. There was, uh, I don't know, ten of us or so, um, leading by example, uh, there as well, participating, um, shoving laws into looms, uh, pretend looms, but they felt kind of real. But it was just, it was a good learning exercise and wanna publicly thank Mezzo EMS and like I said, Katie Howell. Liz, I popped in when she was doing, um, some practice ACT interpretation for our junior students. If you recall, our students that participated in the Equity Institute talked about wanting to have more opportunities like that and more preparation for things like the ACT. I think just a good example of responding to student needs, I get it can't always happen, uh, but in this case it has happened. And we are blessed to have someone of Liz's caliber, uh, as a former counselor, as a former principal, as a former curriculum director, and now our principal. Uh, her ability to articulate that information to students in a clear way and to offer suggestions and guidance. I would dare to say that there's not many other principals that have that level of expertise. So we're fortunate, our kids are fortunate. And then Barb mentioned, I think she said, monstrosity of facility in Sud Prairie. We went to the WESU regional meeting last week, um, congrats to Gary Barb. And then Cindy was not able to, uh, be there to accept her, uh, board certification, uh, Level One, I believe it was, but, um, it was nice for us to be there, it's always fun to kind of be in a different setting, uh, to listen to some speakers who had a little meeting at the night for various reasons. Um, but then he asked to see a facility in a different, uh, district, uh, thirty-two million dollar elementary that was one of two they completed two years ago.
It kind of reminded me of like an HGTV dream home where they're like, we have this carpet made of elk fur that will take the fuzz off your feet and she got it. I mean, I was like. No, I, I might've been joking, you know, like anything, they had stuff coming out of the wall.
Horsehair?
I think they draw with horsehair.
I don't know.
Like horsehair.
It was like, where are you getting, like, somebody came in and they're like, you have umpteen million dollars, you need this, this, this. And it was just, it almost made, yeah. It's ridiculous.
It was one, it was really wonderful to see that remarkable building, I mean, even from, I was sharing the, you know, the tornado room, and maybe you shared that today. Tornado room, what? I mean, the, the screen on steroids came down and protected the window from, you know, exploding, blowing in, whatever.
Came out of the wall and closed off all the window openings to the other side. Just amazing. Hurricane force rated, um, something.
Hundred seventy mile an hour.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, and by the way, those glass panels at, you know, around the staircaseing will give you another.
Three to four minutes.
Three to four minutes. So the smoke doesn't go, yeah, it's like, who's, what? Who does that? It's just, it's just amazing.
The bottom of the staircase.
Yeah.
And it's like, probably two-foot panels that last the hung wall. That was very interesting.
Was. Really well thought.
I always, I just mentioned the, the perspective that the children will have growing up and, you know, God forbid they enter the workforce and, you know, start, you know, in a warehouse, but, yeah, I don't know, it just, and maybe it's perspective, loving what we have here, but it's just over the top. Over the top.
Yeah. Well, the best part is, that was what they did two years ago with another thirty-two million dollar, I'm not sure which one, assuming resembles that one. And that doesn't even take into account the present project to build a brand new high school that holds two thousand kids with all the athletic facilities and everything else to go with that. So, the context is important to consider. At the same time, it's important for us as we try to do the best we can with the resources we have to understand. We're not quite neighbors with them, but some of our neighbors have similar resources. So we try to evolve and be the best we can be. I hate to say competition because that's not a good word in public education, but it kind of is to a certain level. We need to be good at some things because we'll never be able to have those things.
I don't want those things. I don't want to be walking on elk fur.
Uh, any questions? Alright, I'm good.
Thanks, Jordan.
Yeah.
We'll move on to five point three committee reports, that'll be Barb.
Alright, and we go really fast, we had a great meeting, um, talking about some initiatives for the future. Um, some way we can get more photographs just internally and externally. Um, we talked about some type of multimedia course in the future where students maybe can get involved, um, that would also maybe combine in the yearbook. There's been, um, some struggles with that in the last couple of years, um, so we were throwing out ideas. Also, um, an idea was a part-time media specialist that would tackle, um, most of that where it would be maybe a fifteen. Um, also, um, an idea was a part-time media specialist that would tackle, um, most of that, where it would be maybe a fifteen to twenty hour a week job, where you're not paying benefits, but somebody that's on call to run here and cover this, run here and cover this, being an article written, we need, you know, that is actively on call, because Bev, um, her sole purpose is not that, and she tends to bear the burden of that. We also are going to be looking in some competition, um, with Life Touch. Um, we're gonna look into our current contract and see what that looks like, and also maybe, um, do some research into some other companies. Jordan gave a briefing on the status of the staff webpages, which is an ongoing, um, initiative. And we're thinking about maybe surveying the parents, um, and kind of asking them what means, um, of communication suits them and what maybe they would like to see, um, to maybe drive home to the staff that this really isn't just a, a board initiative saying, we want you to do this, but seeing the overall picture of how we can increase, um, engagement between the parents and the staff and the community as a whole. Um, and kind of have this space for engagement and communication that is consistent, no matter if, you know, you had so-and-so teacher last year that used this means really well, and then this year you don't, so we're trying to, I think, really just strive for consistency that every year you can expect that you will get constant communication and engagement from your teacher. And lastly, we talked about opening a district store, um, that, I guess, that's just the name that I came up with, it's not really a store. Um, but virtually, virtually having the ability, um, that people can do clothing and accessory items all year round. It's not just when, um, Mr. Black has their, um, you know, two-week, um, opening, but have, um, an organization that we partner with, uh, year-round, so that anybody at any time can go on and, and buy our stuff. And there is the availability for, um, some fundraising in there too, to have kickbacks and, um, how that all looks, we're to be determined. Um, so we have another meeting, uh, December ninth to kind of regroup and see what progress was made in that time.
I have two questions.
Okay, go.
Um, do we have any pictures from the Stop the Bleed that we did for that event? Did anybody take any picture when you guys were over there?
We were so in girls' team.
Yeah, we were very focused.
You were trying to stick your fingers in.
I think that's a great thing that it could promote that we're.
So, I mean, this really drives home the need, right? There are so many different things that we're doing well, but if you don't have, you can't, you can't rely on volunteers, you can't rely on people. You really need somebody taking ownership of that, that you can clearly kind of lay out the expectations, we want you to stay here, we wanna, you know? So that, that's the, the hope of the future.
Jim said you were gonna be there the next session.
For what?
To stop the bleeds.
Yes, I'm gonna be there first.
Oh, great, you'll want to take a picture.
Typical picture sharing here.
Yeah, I think I'll do a partnership. I drove by the VP in Black Earth, and they had some sign up that said, like, Vanuah pump here, something.
Oh, did you see that email?
Well, I'm just asking, you wanna talk about it, I'll be, cause.
Oh, yeah, I'll let Jordan talk about it.
So, yes, um, we were approached by the VP in Black Earth about trying to do a partnership and some way to support our business as well as support the school district. Um, I had experienced my last district, um, it's called Fry Pump, it was through a local R store. Um, and, I mean, basically what we've arranged with the VP is identical to what my last experience was, where for every gallon pumped on that particular pump, they will donate two cents per gallon back, um, to the organization or to the district. So worked with Kermit and, um, got things organized, and that's where the assignment came from, is he had that put up. Uh, but the partnership is, yes, that for every gallon of big pump there, uh, they will donate two thousand, or two cents, which we will then earmark, or we have already earmarked, um, to use that to support, uh, the endowment committee, um, for the staff mini-gramps. So it depends on being, I mean, I don't know what their volumes are yet, obviously, but my last experience, when we got the first quarterly check, if you will, we were shocked, um, how much it actually adds up. So I'll be interested to see once that starts. But yes, we did, um, I did include that in a, in an email, um, and then it was on Facebook, and the Facebook got a lot of traction. Thousands of people that had viewed it and, you know, things like that. Actually, I printed a hard copy of the screenshot and took it out with Kermit. He was pretty pleased.
Ooh, good, good advertising, he was very excited.
So it's a nice partnership.
Okay. Okay, then let's move on to district business personnel. Let's just combine six point one through six point five.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Can you have Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I will, yes, as well. Move on to seven, seven point one, this is the first reading of some new policies, so if anybody had a chance to review them. But this is just for your information, there's no action on this.
If you have any feedback, like we've done in the past, please offer that in the next couple of weeks. I want to add, I'm interested to, uh, to some of you that have followed up with our insurance company on, and are in the process of following up with our attorney on the transportation by private vehicle. That's a situation that we have ongoing in our district, um, in certain situations, particularly with co-ops. So, and that is something that I encourage, if you haven't paid particular attention to that, please do, because I wouldn't want that to be something that if we approve a policy in two weeks, and then for someone to ask you about it, not to be aware. But, uh, the insurance company was fine with it, so I have passed that on to our attorney for review as well. And other than that, the rest are very similar to the past. It's either updates with laws or just interpretations of things, or just clarity for the district. And this is once again a benefit of our ongoing partnership with you, or is that we, uh, keep lining up things and it's me, uh, with the, uh, the ones I will partner with you. This partnership, I would support, is well worth it, uh, so, yeah. If you have questions, let me know, or if not, the intention with you is that our next meeting, we will bring those back for, uh, second reading and approval.
Do we have any questions there?
All right, I hit a completely off-topic, but kind of topic. The graduation requirements, we had talked one time about giving, like, um, numbering them, or like putting them in order, or giving other rewards, or there was some other talk about graduation.
Was it like a cum laude system, or something like that?
Yeah, I think it was.
Like a class rank thing?
Yeah. I think we had talked, there was one time about, it just triggered my memory, my old memory.
I don't know if I was a part of those, I've been a part of those in other places, um, that's all.
And, yeah, and that's the problem, I don't remember who.
The only thing I remember talking about was deciding the valvatorium based on certain classes they taught.
That's what I was thinking.
Or, yeah, cause it was based on like the AP, the course value versus just their GPA or something.
Well, we used to have a weighted system, and we switched it to just straight-up GPA.
Yeah.
And so that was, that was probably seven years ago.
I don't, do you remember?
Yeah, haven't we talked about switching it back now, or there was some discussion?
There was some discussion about switching it back.
Well, the, the dialogue that I recall, um, was around when we did our initial policy updates. We had to clarify for the policy relative to, yes, the academic excellence scholarship, which is GPA is the number one criteria with, right now, yes, we don't have weighted grades. So an A is an A, is an A is an A, whether you get it in AP chemistry or. The perceived easiest class in the school. I'm not gonna say a class. So, right now, that's the way it is. We had a little bit of dialogue on it then, there's other places that have tried to do things, I mean, yes, the notion of if we wanted to weigh grades. And that would be a process for sure. That would be something that would have to start with, like, a class coming in and then get, you know, so I don't know where people stand on that, but.
I just remembered talking about it. So then when the policy came back up, I just recalled that, that was all, I don't know.
Yeah. One thing interesting is some districts thought initially when they did like these cum laude systems where they didn't weight classes, but they assigned like merit points basically for capstone courses and AP courses and things like that. They thought that was a workaround for the academic excellence scholarship. It's actually not, because the academic excellence scholarship is tied back to GPA, it's the statute. So they thought that was their way around that, and then they realized afterwards, when they tried to award it that way, that they actually couldn't, because the statute, that scholarship is tied to GPA.
Everybody have any other questions or anything? All right, well, then we will move on to eight point one, which is action to approve the FFA overnight trips for twenty nineteen through twenty twenty. I'll make that one.
I'll second.
Usually come in person.
That's what I just said, where are they?
They are in a meeting, actually.
They're excused.
They're excused. Kim did leave me a note that they have an FFA meeting tonight, so they couldn't present, but. When I bring you treats.
No, it's just always fun.
It is really fun to have one year, that's the only.
All right, well, is there any other discussion or comments? Are there none? Mike?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Barb? Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I will, yes, as well. So now we are on to subcommittee ordaining dates and committee dates. Barb mentioned.
So it's December ninth, five-thirty. Terrible. Just so hold him accountable, for all the good stuff that I brought up.
Moving on. November eleventh, um, I'd like to have a facilities committee meeting on November eleventh as well.
Facilities and faculty.
All right. All of us have had both of those to, uh, our running list here, and get template agenda started in the board house.
Facilities is Mike, Barb, and Cindy.
A whole queue accountable to the facilities committee.
I'll be there.
Well, and we have the twenty-eighth, we have curriculum at five.
Yeah, so that's one of the highest, and then we'll come in here for a meeting, we'll meet in Virginia on six. Next two weeks.
What's that curriculum?
Curriculum is Isaiah, Mary Beth, and Barb.
Stop it.
Only you accountable.
You just said that you were gonna have another product there.
Yeah, it's December ninth.
Okay, all right.
So that's true.
Is it twenty?
Okay, and you should have all gotten an updated. All right, so do anybody have any other things that they wanna add for future meetings or anything? All right, Karen, I'm gonna move on to seven point one, which is return to executive session, return to a scout's state statutes. One, one, eight point one through five, people record law to reuse their records when the executive session ends, the school will. Second. Mike?
Yes, Cindy?
Yes.
All right, Mary Beth? I will guess as well. So what are we meeting back there?